Okay, we are going to be going into closed session. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And my understanding is that we have someone who would like to speak to us prior to starting our closed session. So is that going to be in person or by phone?
We received a speaker comment request from Matthew Christoferson and he said he would be in person. I do not see any person in here. We do have a phone number and I can call him now.
Okay, thank you.
Hello? Hello, is this Matthew Christoferson? His reception was not very good.
Oh.
Would you like me to try again?
I guess.
Yes, hello, Matthew. This is Erica with Chico Unified School District. We have you at the board meeting having submitted a comment for closed session. I'm going to go ahead and put you on speaker.
Okay.
You are on speaker, addressing the board.
Okay, um, well, what I want to talk to you guys, talk to you about is, um, the, uh, see what's going on with the, uh, with the school or, you know, seeing if you guys are actually closing or gonna be staying open. Here's my reasoning, uh, hold on, let me pull it up.
Okay, this is, um, the time to talk about that is actually during our meeting. If you were, if you were wanting to make a comment about, um, whether the schools are staying open or possibly, you know, closing or going back to online. So, um, we can, I don't know what the list is of people who have signed up. Do we have a list?
I couldn't hear you at all.
Can't hear us at all, huh?
Okay, um, we're having trouble hearing you too, but why don't, why don't you go ahead? If we can find a way to get your, uh, what you're saying, um, a microphone to it so that we can hear you. We'll go ahead and listen to that since, um, it sounds like you're having even difficulty getting through here, so.
Okay, uh, hang on, one, two, three. See if I, uh, hold this up because it's better. Hang on. All right. Let's see if I can hear a little bit better now. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, you have, um, Matthew, you have three minutes then to express yourself. Please, uh, go ahead.
Um, so my, my, my main concern was to see, um, you know, what's, what's gonna be the, uh, the board's, or at least the, uh, the school district approach? Because I have a son that's on the autism special, special needs. And I know with like most special needs kids, they, they have a hard time like trying, you know, but, you know, unless it's on a consistent basis, um, it kind of really messes with them. Like my son in general, he would end up crying all the time just because, you know, he missed school. Like that was, that was just his jam, you know, he loves going to school. And so like, I, I, I know that, you know, I, maybe not every kid obviously not likes school that much, but my son is definitely one of them that does. And I'm just kind of curious to see where that's gonna go and what that'll look like for him.
So Matthew, are you a student as well?
What's that? I'm sorry?
Are you a student too?
Uh-huh, hang on. Uh, sorry, I, I barely hear you. There's like a really bad echo.
I was just asking if you were a student also.
No, 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 I'm, I'm the father, I'm the parent of
Oh, okay.
Of one of the students, yeah. He goes to Shasta, he's in Heidi Lawson's class and, you know, I, I know that like, uh, at one point in time with that kid, like you mentioned school to him and he would sit there and just start bawling his eyes out. Cause he missed, like he really legitimately missed school, like he was around two. I mean, that, for a lot of kids, that may not be the, the typical scenario. But I know for a lot of kids, that's also their, you know, their escape, be at school. So I'm just kind of curious to see, I'm just kind of curious to see like what's gonna be the, you know, the, the school's call.
Well, well, Matthew, we're gonna be discussing that tonight. And, um, I'm sure we're going to have representatives from, um, different types of, of classes and, and whether there'd be people from the special education department, uh, or, you know, children with special needs. So I'm sure that will be a part of our conversation too, uh, how that will be impacting those students.
Okay, and then am I, am I able to attend the, uh, the meeting tonight? Because I know that I still have a speaker's card like you had mentioned, but, um, I'd like to just kind of say a little bit of a case or, or something like, I have, I kind of wrote something out that I would just like the, the entire school board to just kind of hear in general.
Okay, well, we are allowing at this meeting, um, a limited number of people because of the COVID situation. So if you did want to come down to the Center for the Arts at Pleasant Valley High School and be in the audience when the time, uh, came up for us to have speakers from the public, you certainly could, uh, raise your hand or come to the podium to speak. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, um, it is, it is in the information about the meeting that it is limited to the first forty people that do come to the center. So that's the only number that we can accommodate. Okay, thank you. We are going to go into our closed session right now.
Okay, I'm gonna call in
Okay. I'm gonna call in.
What, you know my spouse?
Okay. Okay. It's my clock here says six o'clock, so we will begin the meeting. I am going to call to order this meeting. This is the regular meeting of the Chico Unified School District Board of Education. We have been in closed session prior to this meeting, but there is nothing to report out from that meeting. If everyone would please stand, we will say the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everyone for joining us from home and also we do have some people today in person. We are going to begin with announcements if there are anybody who hasn't. Any announcements? Okay, I am not seeing any at the moment. From the audience, are there any people who have announcements? Okay, not seeing any. All right, we will move on then to items from the floor. Items from the floor is a part of our agenda where a speaker can come forward to speak about a topic which is not on the current agenda. And the speaker is allowed three minutes. And I actually have three people who are signed up to speak. Two people in person and one person via remote. The first person, if she is here, is a Ms. Loser, I believe, is how you pronounce it. If you would please come forward to the podium. Okay, and I will warn you when you are close to having your time up. Thank you.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
A little louder, please.
Good evening, how about if I move this down? Good evening, my name is Kami Loser. I'm a parent of an eighth grader at Marsh Junior High. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna jump right in. I recently sent each of you an email regarding my son Lucas, who was failing four classes. And I thank you for those who responded. My initial outreach was to his counselor and principal. I was looking for resources to address my son's failing grades. I was told there was no homework jam, no Saturday Academy, and the only thing that they could suggest was that I get a tutor for thirty dollars an hour. After that, I spent two days contacting charter schools and homeschooling options. I was going to pull him out because the AM/PM schedule model is not working. The failing grades and reduced attendance of hundreds of kids is proof. However, miraculously, a week ago, the credit recovery program was created and Lucas started that this last Monday. Here's what's great about it. The credit recovery program has three hours in the morning and combined with his PM schedule, Lucas goes to school from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. A full school day. Every day, at least for now. I am excited for him. Life feels normal again. And I've seen the difference in his attitude, his esteem, his motivation, and his grades in just three days. School provides routine and normalcy and for some kids, a safe place to be. We need to create more normalcy for our kids. The AM/PM schedule is hectic for kids and parents, especially if both parents work and there's no grandparents or tutor or after-school resources to help. On November 4th, you eliminated the AB alternating full-day schedule as an option for the spring semester. Please reconsider. The routine and normalcy is key for kids' success. In the LCAP, your own survey showed that seventy percent of parents prefer the traditional full-day model. And even more recently, the results from the school waiver survey showed that over fifty-five to seventy percent of parents would send their child to in-person learning. That's your ground swell. And where I come from, it's a majority. In addition, fifty percent choose the AB full-day schedule versus the AM/PM, I'm almost done, AM/PM schedule. You said some parents ask you not to change things, but fifty percent want change. So I am asking you to reconsider at a minimum the AB full-day schedule as a spring semester instructional model. Thank you.
Okay, the next person, okay, for the items from the floor is a, I believe it's Katie Reisinger.
That's correct. Thank you for pronouncing it right. Sorry, gosh, I'm nervous when I speak in front of people I don't know. I'm Katie. I just really wanna take the time, I did write an email and I did get a response, so I kind of understand where maybe you guys will answer back to me. I am Katie Reisinger. I'm a mother of a very sweet nine-year-old. He is known, he's at Hooker Oak. He is known by all of his friends. He's very vivacious and friendly, but he is struggling in school and he is in the two-hour in-person learning. And I'm just gonna go ahead and read the email that I sent to you guys, because I'm gonna get off topic here. And I also wanna thank you, I know you guys did not ask for this spotlight to be on you, right? We were supposed to be here discussing new schools and getting air conditioners for Hooker Oak, not, not people's lives. And I wanna thank you so much for your participation through this hard year and having to make life or death decisions. And I respect you for that. I just wanted to say, so I write to you today as a mother to a nine-year-old that attends in-person learning at Hooker Oak Elementary School. His name is Henry Cooper and he's a pretty special little dude. He thrives on friendships and laughter, something that has been hard to attain and retain this year. He's in a vast sea among many other children in our community that need in-person learning to really be educated. It's like being in a dark room with a flashlight. Lights are still not on. It is not learning. Zoom learning is not learning. Now that he's experienced a couple of weeks back in the classroom, he is struggling to catch up. He is definitely a hands-on learner. His teacher is doing an awesome job catching him up with the whole two hours she gets to do it in. One major component of childhood education, as you all know, is play. And boy, does he miss that part with his peers. His best friend has had to go on anxiety medication at the young age of nine because of the erratic change of pace every couple of weeks in this school system. As a mom and with a little bit of childhood education research I have done, I know more than anything children need a foundation and a lot of consistency. I played with the idea of yanking him out of public school and putting him in private school. I even considered moving to a town where in-person learning would not be compromised. We have been through a lot in Buick County. Our children have been through a lot. Our own family has spent more than four months out of the last two years evacuated from our own home. But even through that, I never stopped. The most important thing I know to be for him, going to school and keeping consistent with his education. Making children feel like education is an option and not a right for them is something we cannot toy around with. I urge you to do your research, I can provide articles if you would like, on how Europe is handling the need for education in their countries. Our country often forgets, this is a worldwide epidemic and the world is struggling through the most heartbreaking decisions right now. But most first-
Well, thank you very much, Katie. The time has elapsed, thank you.
Okay, and I just please urge you, think about children and not your political views. This is for our children why we are here tonight. And they need an education and they need their schools and they need full-time learning.
Thank you, Katie. Our next speaker can be contacted by the phone.
Okay, you're addressing the school board. All right. Um, let me mute my end because I don't want any reverb. Hi everybody, this is Caitlin Dalby calling in. I just-
I'm sorry, it's really hard for us to understand what you're saying.
Taking into consideration some things that moving forward with our cooperations.
I can't hear her.
We're, we're having difficulty, it's sounding pretty garbled.
Shall I, shall I call back from my cellphone?
Can you hear me?
No, not really.
Are you not hearing me okay now?
Okay, please speak and we'll see if we can understand.
Um, can you understand me?
Go ahead, please.
Are you, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Um, all right, so I just wanted to address, first of all, really quick, just the feedback I've been getting from a lot of staff members and staff members, or also teachers, or sorry, parents. Basically, what a lot of people are saying that are working at the school site is that they're, they're worried about safety and the level of safety precautions being taken, not being adequate enough for, at least at the secondary level with such, so many different changes of different groups throughout the day. And this is something that we should really be thinking about as we consider making changes between now and Christmas break. So some comments I've gotten are, for example, to be that are not my comments, but somebody mentioned to me that they were told that during their staff meeting, online enrollments are growing because families cannot necessarily accommodate the AM/PM schedule. So we probably are gonna need to look at that, which I know is an agenda item later on. I'll be calling back in to talk a little bit more about those changes. Somebody else told me we have parents sending quarantined kids to school. Parents are refusing to get kids tested. Three out of four, let's say four out of five people in an office space on a campus are quarantined and because somebody else that they work with has COVID and they can't have a list to prevent quarantined kids from coming to campus. So even if kids are quarantined, teachers are under the impression that there's not really a way to make sure that they're not actually coming on the campus, even if they're supposed to be quarantined. I was asked if, I could ask if admin or in the district office pushed for us to stay online from Thanksgiving until winter break? Because there are so many kids talking about their traveling plans, traveling on planes. Teachers are really, really nervous about what's gonna happen after Thanksgiving break. We are seeing now with the most up-to-date research, even coming from the CDC, that kids are transmitting the virus. Our staff members are very concerned about their own health and the health of their families and their students' lives. So I guess the general theme here is just that it doesn't seem to be adequate safety precautions being taken into account, especially now that we're going back into the purple tier. So I'm gonna be speaking a little bit more later about how, how a lot of staff, not everybody, obviously there's a split in how people feel and-
Okay, Caitlin, thank you for, thank you for your comments. I understand that you will be speaking later. You have put your name on the list for later and depending on how much time we devote to that agenda item, we will be calling you back. However, it was very, very difficult to hear you and to understand what you were saying. So I'm not sure if that was because of the phone connection or I just, I don't know. We had a little difficulty with someone earlier. So we'll try to work that out where we, we get the better connection. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on. I just wanna remind people that items from the floor is really to not do with anything on our calendar and we are going to be discussing, you know, school and how school's been going, so anyhow. We're gonna move right now on to the consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry, negotiations. Jim, do you have an update?
Yeah, it's just a very brief update because we haven't met in a couple of weeks, but we're meeting tomorrow with CUTA. Our plan is to clean up the purple, red, and orange MLUs so that regardless of what decision is made by the board, we're ready to go. And we're basically fine-tuning those MLUs, they're, they're pretty much written. It's just the details. And then CSCA, we meet on December 11th, so we should be in the same situation with CSCA also and ready to go, depending on what the board decides tonight and next meeting.
Thank you, Jim. Alrighty, now we will move to the consent calendar. Does anybody on the board wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? Linda, did you need to pull anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, I don't see anybody here needing to pull anything. Is there anyone in the audience who needed to pull anything from the consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay. What item are you referring to?
7.1.1.
Okay, that has to, that has to do with minutes?
[bell]
Okay. If you'd like to come forward, we will pull, we will-
I'll tell you why if you'd like.
Uh, well, yeah, you're going to be given time, just like you were last time. So if you want to, Jim is going to give you the opportunity to speak, and you have your three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Hi, again. I would like to recommend that the board pull item 7.1.1, consider approval of the minutes of the special board meeting on 11/4 for further discussion. The November 4th meeting agenda item indicated that the board would be discussing modified traditional AM PM model update and educational update, and indicated that it would be exploring the addition of site-based online learning options for students. Ultimately, the discussion evolved and resulted in eliminating the site-based online learning option, but also eliminated the potential for the A/B alternating full-day school schedule. Meeting agendas must contain a brief, general description of each item of business to be transacted or discussed at the meeting per the Brown Act. Discussing and subsequently eliminating the A/B schedule was not described on the agenda. Isn't that a violation of the Brown Act? In addition, although the board conducted a lengthy discussion among themselves, the board did not open the item up for a public hearing and solicit comments from the public. The minutes confirm this. Isn't that a violation of the Brown Act? Even if no one was present, the board should note that for the record. Lastly, the board had indicated that they would wait until December 9th to determine the spring semester instructional model. On November 4th, under that agenda item, you determined the spring semester model already, which was to keep the AM PM schedule and eliminate the A/B alternating full school day schedule, all without public notice, appropriate notice, or public input. That's a violation of the Brown Act. The November 4th meeting agenda did not accurately reflect the topic that was discussed and voted on. Had you indicated that you would be discussing the spring semester instructional model, and you would be eliminating the A/B schedule from consideration, the public may have been more involved. I know I would have been. While the minutes reflect the motion, the action, and the friendly amendments made, the decision does not accurately reflect the item that was on the agenda. Given that there are multiple Brown Act violations, that the agenda did not, one, that the agenda did not accurately reflect or summarize the item being considered, and, two, public input was not adequately solicited, the board should pull this item for further consideration. Thank you.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Was that the only person that was going to speak to the-
Yes.
Okay.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
I second.
Okay, we're going to take a roll call vote. Linda, how do you vote?
I'll be aye.
Robinson?
I'm sorry, Robinson, aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Griffin, aye.
I just want to be clear. This is a motion for the entire consent calendar or the consent calendar less the item that was pulled?
Uh, it's the entire consent calendar.
Eileen, what do you?
Uh, Tom, I believe just for clarification, the minutes at the meeting are ours to own. We are, it's not being pulled by a board member, so it's, it can be approved as part of the entire consent calendar because it wasn't pulled by a board member.
Well, I'm curious about some of the points that were raised there. So for the sake of my conscience, I'm going to about know on that.
Okay, we have, the motion passes. We will move on to our discussion action calendar, which will be first, topic, educational services, and update on the AM PM instruction at Chico Unified Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. We're, again, we're going to be giving you an update, as we have the last few board meetings on the educational models. We, at this time, we thought at this time last, on November 4th, we thought we'd be giving you an update on more information about the orange tier and going full day. But since we've been moved back into the purple, we've moved more of our conversation along that lines and the red, and the red tier model. So first, I'm going to call up, also, I believe we have, I don't know if, Erica can let us know if the Buick County Health Department is also available?
He's not in.
Okay, perfect. So we have them available too, if you have any questions for them during this presentation. So we're going to call up Ms. Tina King. She's going to kind of go over administrative protocols for COVID-related information, and then we'll go over our community dashboard.
Right. Thank you. Good evening. John Vincent or Jay, do you have the clicker to click on the administrative protocols link, please, on the second bulletin, or bullet? So several weeks ago, knowing that we were coming back into AM PM and knowing that our community was having COVID cases as positive, we did want to help keep the, well, and not keep, but build the protocols and build upon what our school nurses had started on the health end of the COVID-19 positive cases that would come. As our nurses work with public health, the administrators on the school sites really needed a protocol of steps that they would take if a positive case were to come onto campus. And we were able to put together this step sheet of protocols to help because, again, the school nurse really works with public health very closely to determine the health pieces of the case. But then also, the school nurse does pivot a little bit to help our administrators on the campus. The administrators on campus really work on the communication piece to their school community, including their staff members and students, parents. And then also, they, they work on the contact tracing with the nurse. So that's where this COVID-19 administrator duties step sheet really came from. We have embedded links in there that give, in Spanish and English, the letters that need to be disseminated for close contacts as determined by our nurse and public health. We also have the minimal risk exposure for perhaps other people in the area but not considered close contacts. And we have put this into play already across various school sites. And it has been, the feedback has been helpful. We've taken their honest feedback of how we can improve it because, again, this is, this is a brand-new world we are navigating and want to keep enhancing the protocols. But so far, it is moving pretty smoothly on the administrative side, working with the nurses. So I wanted to share that. And then if John Vincent could exit out of that piece and move to the community dashboard. Go back one slide, John. There we go. It's the second link. CUSD Community Dashboard. Perfect. Thank you. So if you scroll down just a little bit here, this dashboard is part of our COVID-19 resource page on our website. It has become a very important piece of the website as it has timely information and full, clear description of cases, positive cases, as they appear on our campuses. One important thing to note with this dashboard is that only confirmed cases by Buick County Health are located on here. It was initially, we've, we've kind of had a couple of, of shifts in it recently because initially, when it was first born at kind of the beginning of the school year, it had the, it was tracking the numbers week by week. That was in order to be alongside what public health has, and also to track any positivity that might expand in a weekly or 10 to 14-day period of time. The feedback that we got on that was that it was a little tricky to read it that way, and it would be much better at, at a glance to look at the numbers there and the positivity rate. So we made that shift. I know from where I'm standing out here and in the audience, that's probably a little tough to read, but it is live on our website on the COVID-19 resource page, Community Dashboard. And I encourage people to, to take a look at that and familiarize yourself with it. Any questions on those two pieces? Yes, Dr. Kaiser?
So-
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the questions that I have gotten from people, some panic responses from friends and family who get the broad statement to a school site that there's been a positive case. And I've had to reiterate that if their child was actually exposed, they would get a separate email. So there seems to be this, you know, I would say, almost panic response. The other question I'm getting appears to be along the lines of an assumption by parents or teachers that there is some enforceable quarantine if someone leaves the county or leaves the state. And my understanding, and perhaps Buick County Health can reiterate their understanding, that this is a strong recommendation, but it can't be a requirement. Is that correct?
I can address your first comment here quickly. In the panic response, you know, this is a brand-new world we are all navigating. I am a parent, much like most people here tonight, and I understand that we're all, we're all learning a new protocol. We're all learning a new language on what this is. And I certainly, certainly know how that, coming out of the blue, a piece of information does concern people. So the more we can build in sharing that communication on our sites with the steps that, that we go through, knowing that close contact means these things happen, and minimal risk means these things happen, and we follow that every time on the sites, I think will help become what we know as kind of a new situation that we are all in and consistent. So that was the hope with that protocol step. And it just, I think it's going to take a little bit of time to, to see how that plays out each time. And I'm certainly open to questions. If, if anybody at all has any questions about things, they can absolutely call. And I'm happy to, to share the protocols. Or they can also talk to their school administrator as well because it's a district-wide step process that we're, that we're putting into play. And the second one, yeah, I think county health might be a better, better person than I am about the enforcement of the quarantines outside of the area.
Yes, this is Monica Soderstrom from Buick County Public Health. Thank you for inviting me. And Dr. Linda Lewis is also on this call this evening with you. As far as the quarantine advisory, travel advisory that was sent out by the state, that is just what that is. It's an advisory. It is not a mandate. It is not a recommendation even. It's a travel advisory. So with that, our public health director, Denet York, said it's what, you know, for, for people to consider as they're leaving to visit relatives or travel over the holiday, even out of state, not just out of country, that they consider that there's, there actually is truly an advisory by the state to self-quarantine for two weeks upon return. They have been talking about decreasing that to seven to 10 days, and Linda might have some update on that. But, but that is an advisory. It is not a mandate, and it is not even guidance. So, and Linda, did you have an update on that?
Yeah, there's been no change to the 14 days. I, I really doubt we'll go down to seven. The incubation period just doesn't really speak to going down that low.
Yeah.
There is, just so you all know, and you may want to share this with parents, you know, I, I don't know what quarantine may be in other areas, but CDC does have a site that you can look at for domestic travel or international travel to see if there are quarantine recommendations or requirements when you get to your destination. But yeah, there's, there's no enforcement of quarantine when people come back to California or back to Buick County.
I really appreciate that because that was a point that was being raised by several individuals as a, as a, I would say, a heightened level of concern. But the other aspect, there have been some comments, not very many thankfully, about people who think they can't afford to get their kid tested for COVID. And I thought that if someone couldn't financially cover it, that it was covered by the state. So maybe you can clarify that.
Yes, the, the OptumServe site, which is located in Chico at 900 Mangrove Avenue, is free. You do not need to have insurance. If you do have insurance, they will ask for that, to try to bill it, but it is not required at all. You do not need to even be a documented citizen. They do right now, it's quite impacted. So it had been allowing walk-in appointments, but now it's fully scheduled. So you do need to make an appointment. They do see children of all ages there. The other option for people in Chico would be the Ampla Health Clinic. And even if people do not have insurance, they have a sliding scale. And California has put things into place to allow insurance, Medi-Cal, and Medicare to cover COVID testing. So, and they have a sliding scale for people without insurance. Also, even though it's a bit of a drive, over in Orland, in Glen County, there is another Optum site, and it is run the same as ours in Buick County. So it is no cost. And so if people needed to get tested and couldn't get an appointment in Chico, they likely could get an appointment at the Orland site in Glen County.
That is tremendously helpful for, I'm sure, many people. Thank you.
Good. You're welcome. And I would like to, if you don't mind, the, the chart that you're showing, that you, you referred to earlier, that is shared on our screen about the positive cases, and the percentage, that is a marvelous tool to have. And Linda and I, I know both are very happy to see that. The one thing I will caution is when the state guidelines looked at when a school might need to close, and they were needing to track the number of cases among students and staff at a particular school, the 5% threshold that looks at a possible need to close a school is that number of cases within a 14-day period. So the one thing about having this all the way back to August, it, you know, it's like a rolling 14-day period. So that would affect, I wouldn't want people to look at this and think, oh, my gosh, we're approaching a 5% when those numbers could not be current.
I can add one piece to that. And this is where, this has been a little tricky at a first glance, and certainly at the public health, you can probably understand this. John Vincent, can you scroll down just a touch to see, to the, a little bit, okay, good, stop right there.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, we have them demoted.
We couldn't see that one before it was scrolled. So you've got that covered terrific. That's wonderful.
Yeah, we've got it both. So, yes, thank you.
Great, great. Okay. And then the, I will just mention, when someone brought up there being a panic in response to any school-wide, broad communication of a case on campus, that is something that we discussed this summer with the BCOE planning group and with the school nurses, the superintendents, et cetera. As more people hopefully become educated, they will understand there's a difference between receiving notification that your child or, you know, your, your person on that campus has been a close contact versus just a broad, general notification that there's a case on campus. And we certainly understand your desire to be very transparent with your school community. And, you know, just like us at public health, sometimes too much information is- And, you know, just like us at public health, sometimes too much information is, you don't understand, it's too much until you have that panic response. But we always try to weigh, you know, how much information will be helpful for people to feel like they're being, you know, apprised of the situation. So I'm sure that as the school year rolls out, you'll find that happy medium of, you know, who to contact when and how often to send out that type of notification and who to send it to.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Tina, I had one more question. One's already been answered on the positivity rate. Thank you, Ms. Soderstrom. My, on step seven, when we were talking, well, step six and seven, about written communication, are we also including when the need is there among a language letter for the families at home?
Yes. So if a close contact is determined in the contact tracing with the nurse and administrator, looking at seating charts and having discussions with teacher and staff in the classroom, within close contact, that means within six feet, over 15 minutes, over a 24-period hour, that family will get a phone call, a personal phone call from the school administrator, and then followed up with an Ares communication of it written down. One of the, and we did both of those for the close contact, because feedback, and again, I understand this as a parent, you get a phone call from the administrator that you're not expecting about a positive case, and your child is in close contact. And you may want to have the information written and share that later on with your spouse, a family member, a friend, because it is a lot to take in. You know, we know that. This is a, it's a very serious topic. And we want people to be able to have information that was not only shared with them in person, but also written down and along with some other things to look for, such as symptoms, reminders of things and such. So we do have that in English and Spanish.
We do have bilingual Monge targeted, excuse me, targeted case managers. One of the things that can be sometimes a problem is the Monge language in writing is very different and hard to communicate, whereas a Monge speaker could be much more informational for the parent. So I would encourage us to utilize that resource as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Tina, can you remind me of the date that this goes back to? It started with the first day of school, is that correct?
It does, August 17th.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Also, Tina, can you, it is our understanding that none of these cases have come from being on our school site? Is that a true statement?
So the nurses have a possibility of one situation that could have very early on, but it, we don't know for sure. But the majority have been traced to not spread within the classroom.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I hope that Ms. Soderstrom is still here. Forgive me if I've asked this before. I'm trying to figure out exactly what the process is. So let's say, heaven forbid, a student gets a positive test result from, say, OptumServe. Who communicates with who to notify the school that someone's been so diagnosed?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So typically, a parent, what we've seen so far is parent get the notifications first. And many times, you know, our nurses will, if they were here standing next to me, they would tell you that they have been in close contact and communication with a lot of families that may not be feeling well, might be testing, might be waiting on results. They are working overtime and triple time and doing a wonderful job. And our families are doing a wonderful job communicating what's going on in their own lives. So the parents may send the, or call, or send the notification of a positive. They might call the nurse. They might call, public health may call us, that has happened too. But we do look to get that confirmed positive case, because we certainly don't want to cause any distress if it's not a confirmed case.
Who's it confirmed by?
It is confirmed by public health.
So Optum communicates, say it's Optum is the site where the test came in.
Sure.
Optum communicates to the family and to public health?
And, yes, that's my understanding. Public health has the database. So somehow, and our friends at public health that are on right now can probably say this a little more eloquently than I can, but I know on our end, it's, they go in tandem. So the testing location and public health kind of go in tandem and then work with our school nurse.
So the reporting, so at some point, we get a phone call from public health saying, hey, we've got someone who, how do they connect a positive test to one of our sites?
So our nurses get in contact with public health, a nurse at public health, and they specifically talk about the case. Yeah, so they talk about the contacts, close contacts. They get information, so public health can follow up on their end as well with close contact tracing.
But how does our nurse find out? We just assume that the parents are going to tell us?
That's where they have to show us that confirmed piece.
Again, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be difficult. Who shows us that confirmed piece?
The parent does that, that might receive it, or they, yeah, send it to the nurse. If we don't have a confirmed piece, because we have had some, that the parent has alerted us that it's confirmed, but we haven't received it yet due to some time lapses on the healthcare providers section for various reasons. So we can call public health, and public health can confirm due to their, with their database.
So what you're seeing, Tina, I think what Tom is trying to ask is if a parent does not call and let us know that their child's been tested positive, we will get the information from the Butte County Health Department, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Monica from Public Health.
Thank you.
Yes, we, in the state of California, all labs and healthcare providers are mandated to report positive results for communicable diseases to us. So we get those reports, and, you know, most of them don't say, oh, and this child is a student at this school, right? It just has, it's a lab report. So once we have a case investigator calling and talking to the parent and learning about the child's situation and asking what school they go to, we would reach out to the school if we haven't already heard from the school. But Tina, I will agree that I'm really impressed with our community thus far. Almost all parents have been Johnny on the spot, calling, letting their school nurse or principal or teacher know that their child or their family member has tested positive for COVID. They want to let the school know, and then the school nurse has reached out to us. And Linda and I are both the ones who answer the after-hours call line for public health, which is 24/7. And we take calls at night. We take calls on the weekends. We have contact tracers and case investigators working seven days a week. And as soon as we find out about a student on campus throughout the county, we try to work with the school nurse and the principal and/or teachers to identify when the child was on campus during their infectious period and who maybe was a close contact to them while they were on campus. Conversely, if we find out that a child maybe didn't, wasn't, because of being partly distance learning, maybe, and it's a weekend, maybe they weren't even on campus during their infectious period. So then we can relay to the school that although that child has tested positive, there was not a risk to the school community with that exposure.
Thank you. That helps a lot. I guess my last question on that note would be, is it possible for a student to test positive in the school and not find out?
It may be delayed, depending on if there was a delay in the report getting to us, and maybe a case investigator getting a hold of a parent and getting the whole story. So there is that possibility. But I think in the long run, you can be, you know, reasonably assured that your schools will be notified if the parent hasn't notified the school, that public health will as soon as we can.
Thank you. I am indeed reasonably assured.
Thank you.
Okay, Kathy, did you want to ask?
This, this may be, I'm not sure if this is on the outside of what you can confirm, but I think that because of the very sudden move into the purple, jumping over a couple other layers, the concern is, does that then mean that a school that is currently open in some kind of modified in-person can stay that way? That's one question. And then the second question is, could a school that's in purple expand its in-person educational presentation, i.e. go full-time? I know of schools already that have done the reverse and have reverted back to online.
Very good question. When the school planning to reopen was beginning over the summer, the guidance from CDPH discussed all the measures that they were recommending in their guidance for schools to be able to be open onsite. And different ways to achieve that safe opening at school were included in that. And different schools have adopted different ways to achieve that safety. Some of those were, as you were talking about earlier, the AM PM schedule or a mixed schedule, some distance learning, some on campus. The goal was that when children were on campus, they would be able to be socially distanced in their, in their learning environment, wearing a mask, having different mitigation measures in place to protect staff and students. It was determined that if a school opened while they were in the red tier or lower, so orange or yellow, and then later their county went into the purple tier, they would be able to remain open if they so chose to do so. If they hadn't yet opened, like if there were any schools in Butte County while we were in red or orange who decided to wait, and now we're back in purple, they could not now open. But if they're already open, they may remain open. And that's a decision that the school can make. If any school wanted to close or to pull back, that's certainly their option. But they're allowed to remain open, unlike some other sectors of businesses that then have to go into the purple tier guidance. That decision was made this summer with CDPH and the California Department of Education, because they didn't want schools having to ping pong back and forth between tiers. They understood how difficult it was to put all these mitigation measures in place and the different learning models in place, and they thought it would be much too much of a burden for the schools to ping pong back and forth. So they said if a school was meeting those mitigation measures that were needed in order to open, once they got to red, they felt that those would be sufficient to keep them safe in purple. They did say that more testing would likely be recommended. And then, of course, we talked about there actually could be school closure if the school case rate got to a threshold of 5%.
Thank you so much for your clarification.
You're welcome.
Just one more question, Tina, sorry. Have all the students that we've had to put in quarantine that have been found to be near somebody that has tested positive, have anybody of that group that's been quarantined and tested positive since?
Not that we know of. I mean, there's one that could be a possible, the nurses say, but that would be the only one.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Liz?
Yeah, certainly.
So I actually wanted to go back on what Kathy had asked. Kathy had asked a two-part question, and this is from Ms. Soderstrom. The second part of Dr. Kaiser's question was, can schools expand their program now that they are in purple tier? Or do they have to stay where they are?
Well, I think more than whether they can expand their program is, do the programs that they intend to have still meet the CDPH guidance that's in place? So again, there was a menu of suggestions that schools could adopt while they were preparing to open their school for in-person instruction this school year. And many different schools in Butte County have adopted different models for that. So I think more than the question, can they expand, is what can they do that still adheres to the CDPH guidance for schools being open? And as long as those measures meet the guidance, they are allowed, they have that freedom to do what it is that meets that CDPH guidance.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, are we going to, do we have more?
Yeah, John, can we go back to the slides, please? One of the, I'm sorry. One of the board goals this year was parent support for our families, that we wanted to make sure our parents had a way of getting support during all these different modified educational models. On that link, and we won't open it tonight, but that link is available for you to see what we're doing at the elementary and the secondary level for those parent support services. Also, if I could get, Mr. Vincent, can you give us a laptop update?
If I'm behind the counter curtain.
Yes, so, so our team has been working on the laptops. It's in green right now. Okay. So we had the laptops come in last week. We did an all-call and got our whole team to come in to work on those. And so we'll be distributing laptops to our teachers to 10 schools tomorrow morning. Computers classrooms will be delivering those. Then the remainder, we're going to try to get those out on Friday. So we should for sure be able to get those out before Thanksgiving, but we're really trying to get those into all the teachers' hands before, before the end of this week.
So, John, one of the reasons we purchased the laptops, because it'll be more effective to zoom, is that correct?
That is correct. So these will, these are powerful laptops that can handle the load that Zooms puts onto, to the, to the machine. It also turns into a tablet, so allows them to write directly onto the screen of the laptop and have that show up as a whiteboard for the students.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, next, I believe this is Mr. Shepherd.
Yeah, you want to click forward there, Jay, so they can, okay. So we talked about some of these ideas before, and we just want to keep bringing them back, because we don't think that these are ideas that are going to be addressed, you know, in two weeks between board meetings. And so just want to reiterate with the board and with our community that we realize, as we're changing and adapting to different mandates and different environments, that we're going to continue to do everything we can to support our students. Everything from gathering grade data to analyzing attendance data, disaggregating that data, trying to get a better idea of how our kids are succeeding and what is presenting some challenges to us. So we know when we're going to be having that, you're going to be having that conversation soon, but we just want to reiterate with the board that as these changes come across our desks, we're going to continue to really focus on student needs, and that's our goal. We realize that the needs include learning loss and their trauma and social-emotional needs. With the holidays coming up, we know it's going to be a challenge. You know, it's always a challenge regardless of the, of any pandemic or natural disaster. So we're going to be stressing the importance of connections with kids, with our staff, because we realize we're going to need to connect with those kids. And we also, after disaggregating some of the data so far, we're realizing, as we have always believed, but it's showing up in our numbers, that the student-teacher engagement is the crux of the grade. It's the crux of it. And if we can improve that, no matter what modality students are learning in, that's going to help our kids. So we're really going to focus on engagement during the second semester.
One of the things that concerns the Ed Services team is during the holidays, it's usually a happy time for most, most of our students, but it also can be a very stressful and trauma time for a lot of our students also that do not have the family engagement that some do. So when people are talking about what they're doing for Thanksgiving or what they're going to be doing for Christmas or Hanukkah and New Year's, a lot of our students don't have those same opportunities. And normally, they would be on our campuses for our counselors and our wellness counselors to be. and our wellness counselors to be checking in on them. So we're going to have to do a very good job this year if we're at home doing online learning to make sure we're checking in on those students because it's a very stressful time for them. All right, Mr. Keres is going to talk a little data for us.
Yeah, I'm going to present to you attendance data for our students receiving site-based online instruction as well as our students receiving in-person instruction. Before I get into that, I want to point out that I've added an attendance report to be included along with the enrollment report that is part of every regular board meeting. And that, so that is part of, you'll find that in the agenda above for tonight as well. So first of all, secondary period attendance. And this is for students that are receiving site-based online instruction. So they're zooming into class, likely from home in most cases. And these are students that are receiving site-based online instruction to this day. And it's looking way back to August 17th at the, from the beginning of school, but it's limited to those that are still receiving site-based online instruction. And what we see, for all students, we see a period attendance rate of 86.6, which is much lower than we would like to see. Typically, for our all-day attendance rates, as the board is well aware, we're looking at a number around 95%. So this is significantly below. In addition, we see some of our higher-needs student groups significantly below the all-students percentage. My next couple of slides are for all-day attendance, and these are only for students that are currently receiving in-person instruction. At elementary, we only take all-day attendance. And so this is going back to the beginning of the year for the kids currently receiving in-person instruction. And we see for elementary, we see that number right up around 95. Typically, we're a little bit above 95, around 95.5. All students are at 94.8. And we do see, in particular, our homeless student group significantly below that. Looking at secondary all-day attendance, and this is for students that are currently receiving in-person instruction, going all the way back to the beginning of the year, we see slightly lower all-day rate. And I'll remind you that all-day attendance is, students get credit if they're, take part of any part of the school day. So we see 94.3, which is about a percentage point, a little more than a percentage point lower than we would see in a typical school year. And we, again, we see some of our higher-needs student groups falling below the the all-students percentage.
Any questions for Mr. Keres on the attendance?
Less a question than a comment. I am, I'm concerned about our homeless students, especially in secondary. And I just put it on the the public record. I think we're going to bring, hopefully, having a discussion on the next board meeting about other ways, I would like to have this discussion, about ways we can serve our homeless students, especially over the holiday break and especially during COVID, and what other services we can provide to make school a place where they can get more of their needs met so they are prepared to attend and learn.
Yeah, and Tom, I would be happy to provide trend data on homeless attendance, given that we would have an agenda item dedicated to that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we just kind of kind of go back over the tier stages again. Purple tier being stage one, safety and preparedness-making, essential workforce and environment as safe as possible, the red. We've seen all three, three of the four tiers already this school year. So we've been in purple, red, and orange. I just wanted again, and then there's a yellow. I just wanted to to show the slide once again because we're going to be discussing a lot of this tonight. Stages of reopening, we have, if we can open that up, that would be great, John. Thank you. Again, this was back earlier in the year when we first discussed, when we went from the stages back to the colors. And so if you scroll down, again, we had different, but the board had voted on what what we'd be doing during those stages. And then we had the schedules built in for, these are, again, just for you guys to be able to look at, so you could see the schedules for each tier, what we were going to be doing. And again, thank you. And that was the AM PM schedules, and then the purple tier. And what would we be using for our education? Thank you, John. We can go back. All right, I'm going to pass this off to Ms. Daley.
Yes, thank you. So as the board's well aware, we voted on certain educational options tied to stages. And again, those are online learning, online-only, modified traditional AM PM, traditional with safety modifications, and traditional similar to pre-COVID. And we have since learned that that's really unlikely while there are still the governor's stay-at-home orders in place. I also wanted to bring up that there are possibly other options that we could look at. For example, we don't necessarily have to do the same thing at all of our levels. We have heard, and I believe Mr. Lando brought up at a board meeting, that maybe it is safer for certain grade levels to come back and not as safe for other grade levels. So we could look at the possibility of a modified traditional for secondary and a more traditional schedule for elementary when it's safe to do so. And likewise, we could look at a modified traditional for elementary and an online-only for secondary. The options are there, and it was something that got briefly brought up, but really, we did not discuss in much detail previously. So I wanted to put that out there. The board also made the decision that when we moved to purple, we would hold a board meeting within seven days and have a discussion about whether or not we wanted to move back and change our instructional model at that time. Now, we did not find out about moving back to purple until Monday. So that really didn't give us a lot of time. When you're looking at seven days, you know, we really didn't have a chance to agendize that as you would want to agendize it, to make a very specific change in your instructional model for this agenda. We do have the ability to discuss that. However, if you look at the seven days for Monday, we're on Thanksgiving break. So I do think this is a great opportunity for the board to have some discussions about where they would like to see the district head, and in particular, where we want to be when we return from Thanksgiving break to the end of this semester, which is December 18th.
Okay, Kathy?
Well, part of the rationale for me getting clarification from Butte County Health, and it wasn't perhaps, it may not have appeared black and white to all the listeners, but they repeated it twice, so I'm assuming they they mean it, that you would have to be able to keep all your, at least three critical points, social distancing, mask, and sanitation, all in effect. And the commentary is from my own experience with family, children at Emma Wilson and other kids at Rosedale and a kid at Chico High is those have been working with our staff, working very, very hard. And our teachers, they have been working. And I think the relatively speaking low caseload that we have reported, particularly since there only appears even the possibility that one came potentially, I will say potentially, from experience at a school site. So I think it has been working very well. I can't imagine the disruption that we would cause to families and to our teachers and staff to have them leave for Thanksgiving break. Some will probably leave early, but it would be in two days, no matter what, and then come back supposedly to school and find that everything was different. I just see that as an incredible burden. Many, many parents who have sent emails to us have mentioned the emotional, social, positive response that their kids have to at least being in school two hours to three hours, five days a week. So I I really couldn't be in favor. A, I don't think we could pull off the social, the three markers, social distancing, mask, and sanitation with, without even anybody quote-unquote officially working during break, but much less have an effective schedule for our schools. So my sense is we hold the course. I think we'll have a much clearer picture by the end of finals of where we hopefully are improving, potentially, of course, dipping down even further.
Lyndon, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yes, well, I actually agree with Dr. Kaiser on this. You know, it's just been so interesting to me to see the split decisions on this. Ms. Moretti was kind enough to do a survey with our teachers. And just by a narrow margin, our secondary teachers would like to switch back to distance learning. Yet by a very narrow margin, our elementary teachers would like to stay in the in-person model that we currently have. Then in addition, we have our incoming board members who are split. One wants to have in-person, the other, I think, would prefer to have distance learning. So it's really, it's right down the middle. But one of the things Dr. Kaiser said, and also Ms. Soderstrom from the Butte County Health Department said, the ping-ponging back and forth is not healthy, it's not good for kids. We even had a parent say that the consistency in a routine, I think, is so important. So I am leaning towards staying the course, as Dr. Kaiser said. And I would ask anyone to try and change my mind, but that is currently how I feel. So thank you.
Okay, Eileen?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm on the same bandwagon as Dr. Kaiser and Ms. Hevy. I, in reading every single one of the emails that we've been sent, and we got a basket full, it is so clear that 95% of the parents do not want us to make any change in going back to online at any grade level. The impact of going back even two to three hours a day on the mental health of our kiddos is so significant that there's there's no way I would support going online at this point. It just, it just makes no sense for the educational and the emotional health and well-being of of our kids. The only thing that that I would suggest, and I I don't get to govern this, but everyone, including the parents who observe their kids at school and at schools, talk about how wonderful they're doing with keeping their masks on and following the protocols. And I agree, with the exception of some of the ones that have to walk quite a ways home, and they do it in groups. And I happen to be on one of those walk-home pathways. And I see at my home, by the time they get three blocks away from school, there aren't any masks anymore. And so if we could make it a point through our staff to talk to the kids about the importance of following the protocols all the way in their front door, that that would help tremendously. Because as the experts say, the virus doesn't know whether you're in a classroom, whether you're one block away from school or six blocks away from school. Keeping that mask on helps both directions. Keeps you from spreading it and keeps you from inhaling the the droplets. So that would be my request is is for us to do a better job of informing our kids because our kids want to stay in school. And if they recognize how important it is that they be part of the solution, I think they will, they will do a better job of of sticking to the protocols.
Tom?
Thank you. I don't know, I'm sorry to roll back the conversation a little bit. Do we, is Ms. Soderstrom still with us?
Yes, I think so.
Monica, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know if there's a question for you or for Tina.
Yes, I am.
Curious. How do we determine whether we believe a case is transmitted from at a school site? We've had a lot of people say, hey, we haven't had, haven't had any cases transmitted, you know, from student to student or student to staff at a site. How are we determining that?
That's part of the case investigation process. When we interview a parent, or if it's a high school student and we're able to interview them as well, we can really look at where they've been, if they've been around anyone that they know has had a lab-confirmed case of COVID or has been a suspect or probable case, has been symptomatic. So we look at that. We also look at if we have a student who has been tested positive and then there are identified close contacts, we monitor all the contacts as well as part of our contact tracing. So until that person is released from quarantine, we're monitoring them to see if they become symptomatic. And then we can start connecting contacts, close contacts to that case with that case. And we would certainly be talking with the school if we felt that faculty, you know, staff or other students had been exposed to this case and we can't find any other way that they may have been exposed. We actually start looking at possible linkages and then outbreaks. So that's definitely part of the case investigation and contact tracing component. We also are looking at their household contacts. If a student becomes sick, were there other people in their household that they first maybe got it from? Do they go to a childcare? Were they at a party? Were they in some kind of a gym or sport event? We look at the whole picture. We don't just say, oh, this child goes to the school, therefore, they must have gotten it at school. You know, it's it's very much a full investigation. And if we found that we saw links between students on campus, activities on campus, classrooms, we would most certainly work with the school on that.
Thank you. I ask because I've, we've had a staff member, actually, who wasn't sure how she came by a positive result. And, yeah, again, I don't, I just want to know what you did in the case of someone saying, I have no idea where this came from.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of people who, when we first talked to them, have no idea, you know, how they were exposed because this is remember highly transmissible in the community at this point. So even people who are, you know, being very careful can be exposed in the community under the right circumstances. So often with the children, what we see is the parent is actually the person exposed, whether they're at work or it's somewhere in the community. And then the children are getting it from the parents. So, you know, we we really try to work with the whole family to see where a point of exposure could have been.
Thank you very much.
One thing to add to that, thank you, Monica. One thing to add to it is the use of seating charts. So all of our teachers are utilizing seating charts that are updated currently to reflect their, each of their classes. And that has been a tremendous help in the in the contact tracing between the administrator and the school nurse and public health in in terms of close contacts and minimal risk. close contacts and minimal risk. So, that's helpful, too.
Okay. So, before we take some public comment here, I have another question for Monica. So, Monica, in the larger community, the community as a whole, where do we think this upsurge is coming from? Why is this developing now?
Well, we certainly have a lot of theories, and part of it, if you look at the timing of our surge, is after Halloween, where there were reported to us numerous gatherings, both small and very, very large, and not many precautions being taken during those gatherings. So, that is one. There's also been, because we were, as you remember, we were down all the way to the orange tier, and I think a lot of people let their guard down. So, people were actually attending weddings, and gatherings after a funeral, people gathering with friends and family, and maybe having more people over than they thought they were going to have, and you're around, you're around the table, and pretty soon, you're closer than six feet, and everyone has their mask off for way more time than 15 minutes. Nobody could maybe seem to be ill at the time, but it only takes one asymptomatic person in an event like that to spread that virus to others with them. We also have seen some workplaces where physical distancing is very difficult to do, and so, again, much more easily spread. And we have had some of, an ongoing concern of ours since the very beginning of COVID is cases in our congregate living facilities. And that could include skilled nursing facilities, other long-term care facilities, the jail shelters. So, we're always very, very concerned about COVID in those venues, and we work really, really hard to try to contain the virus. And often, when we see cases in those settings, it's employees who have been exposed outside of work, and they bring it to their work, and then either, you know, have exposed their clients, or the people they're working with, their coworkers.
So, we know that in the past, that we could attribute an upsurge before to the congregate living facilities. Is that really where the vast majority of the upsurge is coming from, or is it more widespread now, just among the general population?
Yes. It's much more amongst the general population. So, even though we do have some cases in our congregate living facilities right now, many more of our cases are outside in the general public, and, you know, the purple tier actually really very accurately reflects the community transmission that we're experiencing right now.
Okay. Thank you very much, Monica. We really appreciate you being here.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'm going to take some public comments now. And in our rules, it specifically says that priority will be given to speakers who have not yet addressed the board. And so, I'm going to call on, is Kimberly Snyder here? I don't see Kimberly Snyder was one who said she was going to be here in person to talk. Oh, Kevin, I'm sorry. I just noticed your hand. Did you want to say something?
I do, thank you. And thanks for looking at, at the survey I sent you, and all the feedback that I know you guys have read. And I know our members are split, and I want to say, all the parents that are worried about this, that none of the teachers are arguing that in-face isn't the best option for their kids. That's it. My, my concern, and I'm not picking a side here, it's just the substitute coverage, and that logistical problem, and I don't know how we solve it. So, today at PV, they had three teachers out that couldn't be covered, and they had to find people to cover them on their preps. I've got one of my bargaining team members that is being told he can't come to bargaining, or they're asking him not to go to bargaining tomorrow because they can't find some coverage, but he's still going to go. That is a logistical problem that is outside of what's best for kids. If we can't find a body in the room, as cases are increasing, it's going to create some dilemmas that I don't have a solution for. So, that's, that's a problem that we need to solve, and that, I will leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. Okay. So, I'm going to go ahead and move to a few other people who are on the list, who I don't think we've ever heard from before. There's, you would have to call this person.
I do have Rebecca Conken.
Yeah.
On my list.
Yeah.
And she, she has decided to be here in person, I understand.
Oh, okay, great. Let's, let's hear from Rebecca, then.
My name is Rebecca Conken. I'm a mother of four school-aged children who range from 16 to six years old. In addition, my husband and I are both essential healthcare providers, and I'm currently employed as a pediatric nurse practitioner. All four of my children were ecstatic the day they were able to return for in-person learning on their school campuses. You would have thought I was dropping them off at Disneyland for the day. You see, despite our teachers' heroic efforts, distance learning did not meet my child's social, emotional, psychological, and educational needs. This is no fault of the teachers, it's just the nature of the subpar learning model. The evidence is already in, as statistics are showing that distance learning results in a 30% drop in reading ability and a 50% drop in math skills. But as we know, it's not just academics. The lack of a school-community adversely impacts the mental health of our youth, and of great concern, it leaves behind our most vulnerable students. I stand in accordance with the American Academy of Pediatrics and their stance that school is important for the student's academic instruction, as well as their social and emotional development. The benefits of in-person learning are well-documented, and there's substantial evidence that time away from school results in social isolation, learning deficits, and mental health problems. I've sadly witnessed this professionally with my patients, as well as within my own children. In the height of the lockdown, when much was still uncertain about COVID, we were forced to implore distance learning. In my particular profession, we decided to adapt and implement telemedicine to triage and treat patients. As time went on, though, we quickly determined that this was in no way a long-term option. In order to safely and thoroughly diagnose and treat patients, we need actual live contact with them. Likewise, teachers are essential workers, and school as we know it is absolutely necessary. Our schools have worked tirelessly and already have met the stringent recommendations and requirements to return to campuses while protecting our students, teachers, and staff. Requirements such as masks, desks physically distanced, cohorting students, promoting hand and cough hygiene, cleaning and disinfecting are just a handful of the many things actively happening on our campus to mitigate the spread of illness. I have been beyond encouraged and impressed, as I have seen our schools working together to create a safe and healthy place for our students to learn. At times, I yearn for the way it used to be, where kids carelessly grab the hand of a friend, or teachers welcome students with a hug, but I realistically understand that this is the reality of where we are in 2020, and we will likely not return to the old way anytime soon. The fact is, COVID is not going to magically disappear if we choose to return to distance learning. This will be with us for the long haul. It's our task to not hide from the virus, but learn how to safely and competently interact with COVID, as we would with any other communicable virus.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Oh.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. We are going to go, can you maybe try calling Kim Snyder? I, I hope she wasn't the woman who was here with the child that had to leave, because...
Hi, Kim. Would you still like to address the school board? We can put you on speaker. Okay, I'll put you on speakerphone in just a second. Okay, go ahead, Kim.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Snyder. I spoke about a month ago. I just wanted to say that the changes in my own two kids, just from going two hours a day, is unbelievable. My son is no longer having anger issues, he's happy, my daughter's happy. Please, don't take away any more from our kids. This has gone on too long, with a survival rate of 99%, but yet, the numbers of suicide, overdoses, and depression has increased, you have to question things, especially with kids having less cases, but yet, we're still only going two hours. Never in our history has the healthy been quarantined. We are taking orders from a man that says we can't gather in groups of six or more for the holidays, but goes to a winery with a party of 14. It's time to step up and live and be there for these children. The immune-comprimized and elderly should stay home, and we should go back to school full-time, gather with family, and get on with our lives, and I'm just over it. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Okay. Kim, thank you for sharing your viewpoint. Okay, we have allocated, we allocate 10 minutes towards this. I can take one more call, and then we will have elapsed our 10 minutes, and then we will decide if we want to take any more.
Sorry, just getting him set up in case you wanted to...
Who is, who do you have?
This is Janine Medina.
Okay, let's take Janine's, and then we'll, we'll probably have to take two more, and that'll, we'll see if that's going to suffice.
Janine, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Okay. You're addressing the school board.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Janine Medina, and I just want to say, I am completely relieved that there is talk about continuing the two-hour day for the kids in school. My kids are doing so much better, just being in school. With the precautions set in place, we feel confident sending our kids to school, and we feel it is best for them to receive in-person instruction. Our kids struggle with virtual learning, and our different students in the classroom, especially our six-year-old, who has the added challenge of a disability. It was such a struggle for a six-year-old to do virtual learning, and for class, for educational support. It was an additional hurdle for him, he really floundered. With in-person instruction, he enjoys school again, and both of our boys are just really enjoying school. I would love to see it extend even more. I feel confident that, you know, CHICO Unified will continue to set, you know, precautionary measures, but just having a place where kids can continue to grow socially, emotionally, as well as in their learning, you know, playing with masks and being distanced, but still being able to, to learn that way and be together. I think that would just be just wonderful for the kids. And, you know, my six-year-old still is not able to do math, unfortunately, in school, because it's only two hours, and so, he really still struggles with math, and the teachers are, of course, doing everything they can, but they physically are not there with him doing the math, and so, you know, I would just love to see that day be extended, and, you know, especially maybe have something for kids who are particularly struggling in some of these areas when they are not in school. So, thank you for really trying to uphold time in school for these kids. I do want to also mention, too, that, you know, virtual learning is already an option for families who prefer that route. So, let's keep that in-person learning, let's continue to extend it as an option for families, too, with all the precautions that, you know, have been set in place. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, we have a few more speakers. How does the board feel about extending this a little further?
I'm for hearing from, if we only have a few more, I'm for hearing from them.
I agree.
Okay. We actually have four more, and in the interest of fairness, I'm going to call on Caitlin Dalby next, because I believe that she probably has a different perspective.
Hey, Caitlin, I'm going to put you on speakerphone in just a second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Caitlin.
All right, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm going to try to do this quickly, there's a lot to say, but I just want to start off with saying my perspective, which is a lot of people's short perspective, is that contracting COVID-19 is like Russian roulette. Even seemingly healthy people, even children, are falling tremendously ill nationwide, all over the world. And they're also experiencing adverse long-term systemic effects, or even dying. It's not just the COVID flu, and it's not a political issue. So, that being said, professionals are telling us that with holiday gatherings coming up, Thanksgiving, just next week, likely, we will see further perpetuation of the spread of the virus in our communities, just like we did after Halloween. And there's no way to predict who this virus is going to adversely affect. I want to have him say that teachers absolutely know that what's best for everybody's kids is to learn in person. Nobody's denying that. We want all of our kids to be in our classrooms, safe and healthy, but we can't do that until we get this pandemic under control. The bottom line is that we as a society have not done enough to keep our community healthy. We're not wearing masks enough, we're not social distancing enough, we are not staying in our own small pods, we are, we are out socializing, and it's showing in the spread of the virus. There's a lot of concern that students being quarantined are not, we're not quarantining their siblings also, staff being quarantined, have other married staff are also not being quarantined. Staff is concerned that students might not be getting tested, they're not reporting their illness, there's major delays in notification, as we've heard tonight from our county public health officials, and quarantine guidelines aren't being followed. So, we can't definitively claim that transition has not happened on our campuses. There are incidences of students being forced to quarantine due to being in close contact to confirmed cases, but then, there being a lot of background cases before the quarantine period is done. Staff members feel in the dark about what is happening in their own work environment regarding potential COVID exposure. These epidemic transitions are a huge factor, people are fearful that they may find out too late that they have potentially exposed their students or their loved ones to the virus. Even in the AMPM model, appropriate physical distancing of six feet or more is not occurring inside most classrooms. We cannot adequately ensure public health safety guidelines are being followed, so we need to make some drastic adjustments. I know a lot of you don't think that we should change things up, but if we want to return to any kind of normal anytime soon, we need to go to distance learning before the end of, before the end of practice.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Dalby.
Madam President.
Next, Liz?
Yes, yes. Because it was so difficult to hear some of Caitlin's input, could I ask just a specific question, whether or not she supports staying with the AMPM model?
Well...
I, I, no, I think we're just...
No, I think we're, yeah, I think we need to let that one rest.
I couldn't hear her comment, so I have no idea.
Yeah, I know, I couldn't hear a lot of what she said, but if she, she also provided us with an email that was very extensive.
Yes.
And I think we need to refer back to that.
Okay.
And...
That's fine.
I think that summarizes a lot of what she, she is trying to say. Okay. So, let me go back here to Ms. Loser. Do you want to go ahead and speak again, and then we'll take the other remaining two?
Thank you for letting me speak again. I hopefully will change the topic up a little bit. I agree that staying the course, meaning if that, if what you mean by that is keeping kids in school is critical, so I will state that. But I also want to revisit learning loss, and have a more, a broader discussion about that. As a board member of the Boys and Girls Club, I know firsthand that our community's most marginalized and disadvantaged kids are struggling academically, socially, and emotionally, and we have a waiting list of over 300 kids... And we have a waiting list of over 300 kids that still need help. So, what's really happening with our COVID responses to education is that it's furthering inequity. There is a huge gap between the have and the have-nots and it's growing exponentially. So, when you talk about areas of improvement, you've had it on your slide in multiple meetings, I hope you talk about equity-focused approaches to minimizing learning loss and addressing the needs of our most disadvantaged populations. So, I just have a few throw-out there questions and some suggestions for areas of improvement. I know a lot of parents don't like online learning, especially edgenuity. I think it was an epic failure. The classes that my child is getting an F in are all edgenuity classes. So, I'm hoping that you're considering some altered curriculum and modified learning goals to help kids feel successful. The LCAP talks about plans and protocols for safety and interventions that supports all of our students. It mentions after-school safety and enrichment sites and I'd like to know more about how they're working because we're sending kids home alone or to abuse and neglect. As someone also already stated, mental health, suicide, and the abuse of our children is on the rise. What are some of your foster youth liaisons and case managers for low-income students suggesting to help those kids? We're putting a lot of the burden on our community organizations like the Boys and Girls Club, Salvation Army, and Card to pick up some of the pieces. And I even volunteered to drop off one of the Boys and Girls Club foster kids every day at school and drop him off at the Boys and Girls Club because the district won't provide transportation to the club, only to his home where there's no one there to support him. How can we provide greater access to programs like the credit recovery program? My son will benefit, has already benefited in the last three days from that program because I spoke up. But what about the kids whose parents don't or won't? This isn't rocket science. I don't want COVID to limit our creativity and innovation. Our children's educational, emotional, and social well-being, as well as their health and safety, is important, but we can't let it stop our ingenuity and, and we're creating a lost generation. So, I thank you. I know you're in a tough position. I appreciate being able to speak. I will be here more often to do so, so thank you.
All right, thank you for that. And we will go next to a phone call to Rebecca.
Liz, after that, I believe there's a gentleman with his hand up that would like to speak.
Okay, when we're done with the people who actually filled out cards, then I will have you speak.
Okay, I'm going to put you on speakerphone just a second. Okay, go ahead Rebecca.
Hello, thank you for taking my call. Members of the board, I respectfully come before you today and beg you to keep our schools operational for our community even as we are in the purple tier. CHICO families, our essential workers, and most of all our children need their tiny snippets of in-person education to continue and not be shut down once again. I read the public comments that were posted this evening. They so rarely get referenced during board meetings, but I tallied 62 to four in favor of our schools remaining opening, open, excuse me. I'm the mom of four kids, a junior higher, two elementary age, and one toddler preschooler. We have experienced all forms of the current CHICO Unified system. My eldest is doing distance learning through Oakbridge. My middle child suffered from depression and bouts of anger after the spring shuttering of schools. We had to find a new solution for him and so enrolled him in a small private school to meet his needs. My younger school-aged children have done the Zoom education and then the PM schedule at our local elementary. He's my bright child, a strong achiever, an adopted little boy, and one that I thought would greatly benefit from the GATE program next year. Unfortunately, the learning loss that I see in him as compared to his older brother, who is in private school, is quite intense. He is getting way less education. It saddens me incredibly. And yet, even if we added back just two measly hours, which are insanely hard on parents in a logistical transportation schedule, I saw his learning increase even though it was still behind what it should be. And I saw a little light in his eyes return that had all but died away with hours of squirming around on headphones and a Chromebook. Please, please, don't take our tiny two hours of in-person education away from our children. I was reading a story about Melbourne, Australia, and the lockdowns that went in place when their virus toll spiked. Everything closed, restaurants, bars, they had a curfew. They were only allowed two shopping trips and one hour of outside air per day for exercise. But then I saw a casual sentence in the article that stopped me in my tracks. Their kids were still in school. Although in lockdown, they valued education more than bars, malls, and other frivolous things. They viewed their children as part of their important economy and an essential service that needed to be available. Even though they had briefly to shutter schools, they made reopening them a number-one priority. I want to ask, what about Europe that's going in its second or third wave? France is in lockdown, Spain, their schools have been open this entire time. They were open back in April, they're open now, they have treated in-person education with safety measures.
Thank you Rebecca. Thank you Rebecca.
And more important, let.
Thank you.
Thank you Rebecca.
Our next call will be to Ryan.
Hey Ryan, I'm going to put you on speakerphone just a second.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead Ryan.
Hello, my name is Ryan Crosby, a proud father of three strapping young men. And I have to say, I am really, really relieved to hear, oh. Okay, let me turn this down because I'm getting feedback, sorry. So, I was really, really relieved to hear Dr. Kaiser, yes, hold the course, right? Madam President, yes, hold the course, right? To the gentlemen and ladies of the board, hold the course. A whole generation of CHICO kids is depending on you, right? The reality of it is, is COVID, when it first started, we were all afraid, right? This was a scary disease. We weren't sure of the mortality rate, but now we have experience, right? The hospital set up an extra tent to house the amount of people that were supposed to go into it, right? The whole idea of flattening the curve was exactly that, to not overwhelm the whole healthcare system. It was not intended to not let anybody get infected with the disease. The idea is we were all probably eventually going to get it, we just had to make sure it was happening at a successful rate. Now we have experience with this disease. A lot of our friends and families have had it. Most, most, a majority, a major majority, they, they spend a couple of days at home and they're done. But here's what's real, right? Loss of education. When we go to virtual learning, kids don't learn, right? We've heard that over and over and over. Child abuse, mental health, right? Depression, suicide. Single parents trying to put food on the table, they don't have time to educate their kids. And that's what's required in a virtual learning, right? So, what's real is those things, and I'm not saying COVID's not, but you have a great team that's doing everything they can to, to, and they're doing a great job to not let the virus spread within the schools. And if we, if we close the schools, we lose the option to, to open them later, right? If we close the schools and we're in this tier, we'll never have the option. So, again, I would say, hold the course. A whole generation of CHICO kids depend on you and this is working. Don't bench our best asset, the teachers. I really appreciate the opportunity to, to talk and I, I just appreciate the fact that we've had so many great speakers today and, and the people that we've had on the call. So, thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Okay, we will take our final caller and then we will get to the gentleman in the audience who wanted to speak. Jody.
Hi Jody, I'm going to put you on speakerphone, okay? Just a second. Okay, go ahead Jody.
Good evening, board members. I'll, I'll be very brief in my comments this evening. I just want to state, it is possible to consider the risks, to look at the science as it emerges, as we learn more about COVID, but still arrive at the determination that having our kids in school is the best thing for them academically, physically, socially, emotionally. It is the best thing for their well-being. I believe our schools are meeting the mitigation measures required to stay open. I believe Public Health tonight did a beautiful job of clarifying what those measures are and I think our district has done an outstanding job of implementing those. Our kids are happily complying with that. They're happy to go to school, they're happy to be there. It's working and as a parent, I'm comfortable sending my kids to school every day with the protocols that are in place. And I can't state again how much happier my kids are, what a night-and-day difference I've seen in them in these past five weeks. I believe kids should be in school for a full day. I believe the two-hour window is extremely difficult. As soon as it's responsible to do so, I would love to see that happen. But for now, at a very minimum, please do not send our kids back to distance learning. We should stay the course. I think our case counts and our numbers within, among our students bear that out. Let us do what's right for our kids. Thank you.
All righty. The gentleman who is here, if you would like to step to the podium, please, you will have three minutes, please provide your name.
My name is Matthew Christopson and I had called earlier, but unfortunately was unable to hear anyone.
Yeah, yeah, get close to the microphone a little bit and if you have to adjust it, that, okay, that would be good, thank you.
Thank you. So, like I said, I had, I had a hard time hearing anyone that I had had the phone call with earlier, but I had some prepared and I left it at home. So, in a short, my, I'm, I'm the father of an autistic six-year-old, soon-to-be seven-year-old. I have three other kids that were in the, you know, that were going to school. They were doing the online learning and everything and they did all right. They didn't, I'm not going to say they excelled, but they, they did pretty good. One of them actually graduated early because she had met all of her credits. My, my six-year-old though, on the other hand, you were lucky if you got him on the Zoom meeting for more than a minute to two minutes at the max and that would be the end of his, you know, his learning. And I've noticed since, you know, he would, it got to a point where literally you would say the word school and he would sit in the back of my van to start bawling his eyes out because he missed his friends, he missed his teachers. The first Zoom meeting that they actually did, he literally looked at the screen and I saw this kid with the biggest smile on his face in a long time since the whole shutdown After he started going back to school, like the first day I dropped him off, I, you know, it was even a bigger smile just to see him, you know, realize where he was going to school and he was excited to go. And even just with the two hours that he's doing, it's absolutely amazing to see how he's already progressing. And, you know, I, I would just, you know, even just the two-window difference does make a difference. And I just, you know, I, 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 I very highly agree with what everyone is saying about keeping the course and just keeping everything open. And, you know, I just, I just hope that that's something that we can all really consider because, you know, my son, he absolutely loves school and I'd hate to see him broken-hearted all over again just because the school wants to close. I mean, it was hard for me to see then, it's still hard for me to see now, even the possibility of going back to that. And I just, you know, he doesn't understand, he's on the autism spectrum. So, when the things get taken away from him, it totally throws him off a course, unfortunately. So, I, I hope that you will make that decision to keep the schools going the way that they are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming forward. Okay, it sounds to me like from what was going on before the discussion, we had formed pretty much a consensus from what people revealed about how they were feeling and if, unless anybody's feelings have changed since we had input from the public. Yes, Kathy?
If the census that we need a formal motion, I can do that.
Yes.
Actually, let me, let me clarify there for a minute because this goes back to Ms. Loeser's point from earlier. So, when we agendized this, we were not yet in purple, did not know we needed to have this meeting.
Right.
So, what you would need a motion to do is if you wanted to bring this back to make a decision, we would need to have a special meeting as we said we would do. And at that point, that agenda item would be the decision to change what we have. If you want to stay where we currently are with an AMPM, then we don't need to do anything and we don't, we don't need action. But it was really important to have the discussion and make sure that's where the consensus is. But if there is a desire to change from where we are, then that would require action and we would need to bring that back as a very specific agendized action item.
So, no, I do not wish to change where we are. I felt like that the information that we got today was overwhelmingly in support of the school's ability to continue our current AMPM. Now, the issue of the 5% threshold, threshold is out of our control and it's set by the Health Department, so thank you.
Okay, so just to be clear, at the next meeting, there's going to be discussion about what happens in.
The second semester.
In the second semester.
Correct.
So, basically by not acting at this point, we are saying we are going to stay the course through the end of the year and then, but we will revisit at that meeting in December what's going to happen because you need to have a period of planning in December in order to make whatever you're going to do happen in spring.
Correct.
Or January, whatever.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, is everybody clear on that? Linda, are you clear on that? Okay, all right. So, we will not take a vote and we do not need a motion unless the motion was to do otherwise.
Okay, so Kevin is, and I may need to turn to Erica to ask for clarification here. But the motion that the board made before was that you would bring, when we move to purple, you would bring it back for discussion, correct?
I think we had discussion.
Yeah, okay. So, that was, yes. And, and I know we covered the points that we wanted to cover, which were about how the current status, how it was, the COVID surge, why, where, how it was happening and we examined that and spoke to Public Health and examined those type of issues. Yes. Anything further Kelly?
So, we're just going to add to the confusion here. You know, our current model that is adopted by the board does say that when you go to purple, you would go to online. So, that discussion would be when you made that move. My understanding of the board's decision before was that we would bring it back for discussion at that point, but you had voted to go to AMPM. But it is your model that was adopted way back at the beginning of the year was purple, we're online, you know, red. So, you know, it is confusing.
Yeah, Eileen, why don't you speak, but I also think something changed there. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I believe something did change. I thought that we modified that original decision to say that if we went to purple, we would at that point meet to determine whether or not to go online, that it wasn't a predetermined decision. The decision was.
I agree.
To meet.
That's my understanding as well. That's my understanding.
Right, because, yeah, we very specifically did that because we, at that time too, initially when the stages first came out, we did not know as much as we do now, and we did not know that once we were in red or orange, that we would then have the option. We thought we would automatically have to go back and subsequently we found out that we can decide to stay in school if we examine all the, you know, circumstances and decide that that's what we want to do.
And that we are meeting the, what the Department of Education has established as the guidelines that we have to meet to do in-person, which we have clearly met.
So, I will read the motion. The motion was made that if the county moves back into the purple tier, that the board will meet to determine whether or not. that the board will meet to determine whether or not to adjust the Chico Unified District in-person versus online delivery status. The board discussed the timing and schedule of this decision. Two friendly amendments were made but not accepted. A friendly amendment was made to clarify that if the next regularly scheduled board meeting is not within seven days of the county tier change to purple tier, the board will call an emergency meeting to discuss the particulars and then make a determination if CUSD will go back to online instruction at the time based on information. The friendly amendment was accepted.
So, may I step in here for a second?
Sure.
It sounds like, so the motion was that we would determine at the next available meeting. And I think what we're held up, held up here is, does a determination require a motion for action of some kind? And my understanding would be no. I feel to me like if we choose not to move anything at this point and simply move on and to stay in the plan we are in, we have made a determination, if you decide not to choose and all.
I just think we need to be very clear about that. That was clear. Thank you, Tom.
Yeah. So I think everybody agrees. And, and certainly, everything we've discussed and everything everybody has said as far as their feelings go, everyone is on board with retaining the status quo for now. And then this will come up again at the December meeting.
Correct. And so, so I am clear. I will send out communication tomorrow that Chico Unified will remain in the AMPM model through the end of the semester, which is December 18th. Thank you.
Okay. Great.
But I would like to say, if you don't mind, there, there were a lot of really good points brought up in the discussion here, which we will certainly circle back to. Hopefully, we'll address a lot of those at our next meeting regarding how we can help some, some of our students other access to programs and whatnot. I don't, those points were raised and we will address them when we can.
Okay. And one thing that people need to understand as well is how things get agendized for this board. People have, the board as a whole has to vote to agendize items. And the majority of the, the board need to, if, if somebody has an idea that they want to bring something forward, they can bring it forward. And the, the whole board decides, though, whether that's going to be something that we turn over to staff to investigate, to research, to, you know, develop, you know, whatever policy on or, or things like that. So, just, just to clarify that that's, that's how agendizing works. People, you know, are just not, come up with ideas and it automatically happens. The whole board votes on whether something is going to be considered. Yeah, Eileen?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. On the, not on that subject, because I agree with you, that's our process. But I would just like to, again, thank the two representatives from Butte County Department of Health. The, the information that they provided tonight, as well as their working relationship with Tina and our nurses, have clearly added to our understanding of not only what we need to do, but our being able to evaluate whether or not what we thought we needed to do is being effective. I just am, feel so much better after listening to their input and walking through our procedures that what we intended was to be as diligent as possible to make sure that when we started in-person again, that we were doing everything, everything possible to make school the safest place for our kids to be.
Okay. Now that we've covered this topic, I think we should move on. Our next item is Mr. Sullivan, I believe, notice of instructional materials declared obsolete.
Aye.
Thank, thank you for your time. This is a bit more of a mundane topic. As we have materials that become obsolete, old, not used anymore by school sites, part of the process is to bring them before the board and get permission to kind of move them through that process of allowing them to be offered at other school sites or up for sale at some point with it. So we are at that point, I think Chico High and, I think it was Rosedale, had a bunch of materials. Rosedale's are more geared with the new science adoption coming in. So they're moving out the old ones to kind of make way with that. Chico High had a mix of just very older outdated kinds of materials also. So they are looking for your approval to move forward with that obsolete process.
Okay. Kathy?
Some of these things are older than I am. What took so long?
I, I think teachers are pack rats to some degree. And they are afraid to give things up until they know they are getting something in, to, to replace it with. So I think that's just kind of the, the way of the teacher is to hold on to things.
I move to pass the action item.
Okay. That would be eight point two.
Yep.
Okay. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Dr. Kaiser, second by Eileen Robinson.
Can I make a personal comment? Some of them are older than Eileen as well.
Okay. We know you're both the same age.
I just had a birthday. They're, they're giving me a bad time.
Okay. All righty. We'll take a roll call vote on this, just because I think we, did we do one? We didn't have to do one. Okay, we don't have to do one that way. I, I'm, are you there? Out there still? Linda, are you still out there? I don't see your face.
I'm here. I'm here.
I don't see your face.
But I do think we need to do a roll call vote because Tom voted no on the last item.
Oh, that's right. Okay. I, I knew there was a reason in the back of my head that I had to do that. How vote you on this one?
Huffy, aye.
Okay. Robinson?
Robinson, aye.
Kaiser?
Kaiser, aye.
Griffin, aye.
Lando, aye.
Okay. Got that straightened out. Thank goodness. All right. Next is Business Services. This is information only. Conceptual, maybe it's, I don't know if we're going to ask, be asked to do something here. Conceptual Design Development Update for Inspire School of the Arts and Sciences. Julie, are you out there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Hello, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time this evening. This is just an informational item. And John Benson is going to pull up the, the conceptual designs for you. We'll just run through these slides real quickly. I know you have a very busy night. This first slide is describing what the Board of Education for Chico Unified has already approved for Inspire. So I wanted to just revisit this so you could have another look at it. It includes a seven-acre parcel on the Canyon View High School site. And the, the color-coded buildings are showing different areas of education. For instance, the humanities area, arts area, administration, science and math are all color-coded a little bit differently there. And then you see a concept of some sort of outdoor gathering area and the parking lot. John, if you'll move to the next slide? The next slide is showing kind of an iteration of the concept where we all know, are very aware, that Inspire High School is, has a huge following for their performance arts. And that in time, they will want to have a theater on their site. So this was sort of a first run-through of what a theater might look like on the site. And it is exceptionally large, as you can tell in this drawing. So we, we needed to work on it a little bit more. It was infringing on the parking lot, which we all know high schools need a tremendous amount of parking, especially if you're going to have a theater like this, where you'll have people coming to see your great shows. So, if you can move on to the next slide, John, you can see the concept is changing a little bit. We brought back the parking lot. If you're looking on the right side of the drawing, that is the edge that would border Canyon View High School in the future. And the left side borders the, the public there. There's an apartment complex on that side. So we've added a staff parking lot on that left side of your screen. And reconfigured the buildings a little bit to create a nice drop-off there in the front of the school, making more of a front of campus. That will kind of coincide with the way that Chico Unified likes to configure our campuses with a single-point country for safety. And reconfigured the administrative buildings to be right there in the front. As well as moved the arts, the performing arts classrooms closer to the future theater and the potential outdoor gathering space that could be a future amphitheater. If you move to the next screen there, this is showing a concept, a rendering of the site that coincides with the last plan that you looked at. In this view, it's showing all of the buildings as single-story. The one that is a little bit taller there toward the big white building to the upper right-hand side would be a permanently constructed building for their dance department. Dance requires a higher ceiling for them to be able to fully perform the things that they want to do. So that's showing that feature there. Next slide, please. This next slide is showing an option for a two-story building. A two-story classroom building that would house 10 buildings. If you see the left side of the screen, you see five blue classrooms that are sort of outside of the plan. That's the upper story. That's how they show a second story. And that would slide over and fall on top of the coinciding five blue squares that are on the left-hand most side of the, of the drawing there. In this option, as you can see toward the upper right-hand side, it frees up a bunch of space on the site, the footprint of the campus, that would allow for more growth in the future, which we think would be a great benefit to the school to be able to have some room to grow within that five-acre parcel that the district is allowing Inspire to, to occupy. If you go to the next slide, John, you'll see the rendering that shows the two-story building. And then you can see that nice open space in the upper portion that would be room to grow. The next slide. This shows the main front entryway in the single-story option. And then the next slide will show this, the main entry with the two-story option. And I think everyone would agree that it, it looks a lot more attractive. They're a little more mature of a campus for high school students. Go on to the next slide, please. And then these slides here are just showing different views of the single-story and, and two-story option. If you want to just thumb through them, you get the picture. There's quite a difference.
Very big difference.
Yeah. Nice. And, yeah, that one shows the, the open space in the background that you would have with the two-story. Now, if you go on to the next slide, the spreadsheet there. Sorry, we're not through them yet. Oh. I'm sorry. Go back to the one before. This one here shows the future theater. It's, it's just sort of a, a white blob structure right now because it's, it's way in the future. And we're not sure what that's going to look like. But we wanted a placeholder to be there. But what is nice, and I want to mention, is the, this view shows an outdoor gathering area, potentially a stage with recessed concrete seating so that they could gather their entire school population in one place, which we know they don't have the opportunity to have right now on the Chico High campus. And it's really important. Even though this won't really work out for them in inclement weather, we have pretty good weather in Chico. And it's much better than, you know, the opportunity they have right now to meet with their whole student population. If you look real closely on the face of the stage, you'll see some purple there. And that's a, an artistic design with feathers on it. And a feather is, is part of their, their logo. And this is a way that they are hoping to raise funds. They have many ways out there that they're raising funds. This is just an additional way where they're going to sell these metal feathers that will be applied to this wall. And you can find those on their foundation website. I thought it was a really clever idea. And it, it will look really nicely. But if there's members of the public who are listening that would like to participate in that fundraiser, it would be, it would be really nice to go on their foundation website and do so. The next slide, John, if you could take us there, shows us a, a real small summary of the costs of the project and the funding sources. So on the top portion, it shows the, the known funding sources as of right now. A million dollars, which this board has approved for infrastructure contribution to the project. And then the remaining measured K dollars that Inspire has in their account for matching funds and a pre-approved state loan in the amount of 5.5, almost 5.6 million dollars. And then there's a blank spot because they are currently actively trying to raise money to, one, bring their own funds into the project to lessen the amount of the loan that they have to get, which is really important because it's a long-term agreement that they will have to pay off. And also to just supplement the project with funding and be able to eventually afford that beautiful theater that they want to have. Then you see the estimated costs down below that are separated by option one and option two. Option one is the single-story. And option two is the one with the two-story 10 classroom building. As you can see, the overall balance of funds that are needed on the ones, the single-story is around $200,000. And then the two-story option would take them up to having to fundraise for the million, 61,000, almost 62,000. The Inspire Board did take this under consideration last week. And they passed, you know, with their board, they want to go to the two-story option. And I agree with them, very highly agree that that is a great idea. I've always thought, given that they have such a, a small parcel of land, that going with the two-story option, giving them the room to grow without over, you know, overburdening the site would be really good. So, I think I have one more slide to show you. Oh, it's a close-up, sorry. A close-up of their dream of what the outdoor amphitheater might look like with a, a performance area outside. This slide also shows that, that really clever feather donor wall below. And it does outline the cost. They're very rough cost estimates at this point for what the amphitheater will, will cost. And those, I must mention, are not included in the spreadsheet that you just saw. So this is something that they would have to fundraise for in addition. And that is the presentation. We're really excited about our progress on the project. We're, we're heading into design development with Rainforth Grau Architects. And we are hoping to get those drawings to the Division of the State Architects sometime this winter. Are there any questions?
No. It's really wonderful. I'm really impressed with the drawings as well. Thank you for the presentation, Julie.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Julie. I guess the next one is yours too, about Chico High's Ag Career Technical Education Project bid, pre-approval for the Ag Greenhouse.
Yes. Thank you. So we have divided this career and technical education project into two separate phases. The first phase is going to be bid tomorrow afternoon at 2:00. And that is for the, the new greenhouse and the utilities that go with that greenhouse, the pad that would be underneath it and the pad that will be under their future shade, shade structure. And we're asking for your approval, a pre-approval, so that we can get started on it within the budget outlined on the lead sheet, which you've already approved this construction budget for the project. But I'm asking for pre-approval for this first phase of bidding that we'll be getting tomorrow so that we can enter contract and get started on it right away. so that we can enter contract and get started on it right away. We will bring you the results of the bid and for ratification at the next regular meeting.
I move 2.2.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Dr.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Kaiser, second by Tom Lando. Any further discussion? Yes, Eileen.
Just to clarify, what we're approving is the old "within the budget, but no more than" type of concept, Julie?
Yes, and this first phase is significantly less extensive than the second phase, so we'll know how much money we have left over for the second phase after this bid comes in.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, no more than 500,000.
Ah, thank you.
Okay. I believe we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Linda, you said aye?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. All righty, that one passes.
I did.
Passes unanimously. I like how you raised your hand. That was good. I could definitely tell. All right, so that one passes. We move on to the next item is Discussion Action Safety Project, one tree removal at Bidwell Junior High School.
Yes, we have John Carver on the line, who will be addressing the board on this issue. I will just remind the board that if we find a tree that is dying and needs to be removed because of emergency, which we did have at Bidwell Junior High on the backside of the campus less than a year ago, then we've taken action on that. This is a tree that we believe is dying. However, it is at the front of the school, is very prominent, and so we felt like this needed to be agendized, and the public needed to be able to weigh on it if they so wished. So with that, John, do you have anything to add?
Well, good evening, board. How are you tonight?
Good.
And sorry that we have to bring this to you tonight, but this is a camphor tree that we've estimated, or guestimated, to be about 80 years old. Camphor trees grow to about 50 to 60 feet tall, and they live between 50 and 150 years old. This particular camphor tree got a disease called a verticillium wilt back in 2010, 2011. And in 2012, when I was in management, we had a tree company come out and try to save the tree by cutting back and cutting out the verticillium wilt. But I know you guys have a picture that was provided for you tonight that shows the areas that were cut back back in 2012, and they are still there, but the rest of the branches and the leaves have now died off. The issue with this is the more we let it go, the more dangerous it is, and the branches are going to start falling. So out of a safety concern, what we're asking for you tonight is go ahead and approve us to go ahead and remove this tree.
I so move 2.3, and having had a student at Chico State die next to my office from a broken tree branch, yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, and I recognize that tree. One of my daughters climbed that tree so she didn't have to deal with Paul Karas, who was principal at the time.
That's funny.
That was a while ago. Okay, so we have a motion by Dr. Kaiser, second by Eileen Robinson. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think I climbed that tree, too, back in the day.
Okay.
Just for the sake of clarity, do we have any speaker cards or anybody request to provide input onto this topic?
Not on message. No.
Okay, thank you for checking on that. Okay, let's take a vote, then. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, that passes unanimously. Next up is, we're going to have to have a public hearing on the 2021 Budget Overview for Parents, and that's Jackie. I can see your face down there at the bottom. Hello, Jackie.
Good evening, board. So in front of you is hopefully a document that you recognize. We incorporate it with the LCAP every year that is presented to the board in June. However, given this COVID environment, we didn't actually put together and put forth before the board the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan. But what we did provide, Tina at the helm with our Ed Services team, was the LCP, the Learning Continuity Plan, that the board did approve in September. But what the state said was, that's great that you had the plan, but now we need a budget overview for parents to help them understand the dollars that are at hand and the dollars that are spent on the services. So this document basically has two parts. The first three pages talk about the current year, the 2021 year, and the dollars associated not only as a total budget, but also specifically related to the Learning Continuity Plan, as well as our high-need students, which are identified as foster youth, English language learners, and low-income students. And the second part of our budget overview is page four, which says, that's great that we're moving forward, but we also need to reflect on the prior year. How did we do on the prior year? So I'll kind of go through it briefly, the first three pages talking about the current year. So we are projecting revenue at this point of about 160 million for the entire district. And of that, 113 million are total LCFF funds, or Local Control Funding Formula funds. Those are generated by our average daily attendance. And then specifically, within that 113 million, there are 10 million that are called supplemental and concentration grants, so it's 10.2 million. It's kind of in the middle of the document in the pie chart. And those dollars are specifically generated by foster youth, English language learners, and low-income students, and they are to be spent on increased and improved services for those three subgroups. So if you go to the next page, John, thank you. So Tina provided our total budgeted expenditures in the Learning Continuity Plan when she presented in September, and it was just shy of 6.6 million. And that was expenditures that we were going to be spending related to learning loss mitigation, specifically out of the Federal CARES Act dollars. And of that 5.6 million, 5.8 million plus were to be spent on these high-need students. And so you can see that with our budget of 160 million plus, we've only identified 6, 7 million dollars here. So the remaining covers essentially all the other services that it takes to run an entire school district, and those are listed at the bottom, including our core program, which is our classroom teachers, transportation, information technology, our grants, our HR department, payroll, basic administration, et cetera. So we are expected in this next, actually in the current school year, to receive just over 10 million dollars of dollars to increase or improve services for our three subgroups. We have identified those services, and they are largely in the Learning Continuity Plan, as well as continuing many of the services that we historically have. And they've kind of been talked about this evening, you know, clearly our nurses and our health aides, as well as our vital targeted case managers, and much technology, not only for our students, but our staff, and getting hotspots out to our families who don't have connectivity or have low connectivity, as well as our site-based computer technicians. So I just want to speak on the last page, John, reflecting back to 1920, which seems like eons ago. But we did at the beginning of the year, I do want to make a correction to this form that when we bring back at the December meeting, we'll reflect it. So we originally budgeted, which would have been in June of 19, 14.5 million dollars for expenditures and services related to our high-need students. When we actually closed the books last year, we spent 14.6 million. So there's a variance of about 75, 77,000 dollars that we actually spent more than we anticipated. And that was largely due to, in May and June, when we're establishing the budget, there are many vacancies, and so we have to estimate what a teacher's or a classified member's salary is. And then when we actually hire them, sometimes it can be higher and sometimes it can be lower. And in this case, it was slightly higher than we anticipated. The other piece was that our Renaissance Learning Contract was slightly higher than we anticipated also, and that contract covers accelerated reading and star reading. So that's the Budget Overview for Parents this evening. It does require a public hearing, and then it will be brought back at the December 9th regular board meeting in conjunction with the First Interim Budget Report for approval by this board. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Jaclyn? Okay.
No question.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, I don't have any. I don't have any questions.
Oh, you don't have any questions? I'm sorry. I misheard you there. Okay, well, in that case, you do?
Yeah, just a quick one. Sorry, Jaclyn, I think I may have just misheard. You said that we had budgeted a little over 14 million, and I thought you said that the increase was only about 70,000, but it looks like 600,000 on this chart.
Yes, correct, Tom. So there was a keying error, so that the blue chart on the screen of 14 million really should be 14.5 million.
Ah, thank you. I get it. All right.
So I will correct that when I bring that forth at the December board meeting.
So the actual discrepancy was only, as you said, about 60,000 or so?
Yeah, it was like 75,000.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Good catch there. Okay, I'm going to open then the public hearing. And if there's anyone in the public who wants to contribute to this discussion, please come forward. Any cards submitted? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And then, as you said, Jaclyn, this will come back?
That is correct. It will come back for approval in conjunction with the First Interim Budget Report at the December regular meeting.
Okay.
So we don't need action, correct?
That is correct.
Other than fixing what Tom caught. Very good, Tom.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much, Jaclyn. All righty then. So we are going to move then to number three, human resources, and this is an informational item for Mr. Hanlon.
Okay, so this is regarding surveillance testing of staff. Back in the summer time, there was a lot of things coming out of CDC, and they issued some guidelines, not a lawful mandate, but some guidelines for surveillance testing of staff, so that we, over a two-month period, basically test all of our staff over a two-month period for COVID because of the large number of asymptomatic folks that are out there. About half of the folks that get COVID are asymptomatic, and since we work with children, that was one of the guidelines that was put out there. Although it's not a legal mandate, we have strongly recommended that with our staff, and our legal counsel has also recommended that we comply with the guidelines, so we have set that up in conjunction with Public Health and OptumServe, which was spoken about earlier before. It's the kind of the makeshift clinic off of Mangrove, 900 Mangrove Avenue. So although we cannot require it, we sent an email out on November 6th to all staff, and we set up a schedule of different schools based on size of staff so that we didn't inundate the clinic all at once. We have around 1,500 staff, and they can do about 156 tests a day. So we didn't want everyone going in at once and kind of overflowing them. So starting on November 9th and until December 18th, when we go on winter break, we had about a six-week window to get everybody in. So we broke that up into six groups, and we started the week of, November 9th through 13th, and then we are rotating through. Next week, we enter our third group that goes in there. And so the information I'm receiving at this point is that, and you heard it before, there's a lot of our folks going through. So even though it's not required, we have a lot of people complying with it, and we already have two of our staff members that didn't know it, that tested positive, and so we've sent them home, and they're in quarantine for two weeks. They're both asymptomatic, so they would not have known otherwise. So that's kind of where we're at at this point. Our plan is to then pick that up again and redo this whole thing over again once we get back in January. We're kind of cramming a lot of people through there very quickly. We'll break that into two-week segments. We just needed to get everybody tested before the winter break. We can loosen that up a little bit after we get back because we have a two-month window, so we can take two-week segments instead of one-week segments to get that in. So time will tell if folks continue to go in, because again, it is voluntary. So that's where we're at.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jim. All righty, once again, we have items from the floor, and since there's nobody on our floor, I don't think we're going to have any items. You do have a call?
We do have a speaker scheduled here for the surveillance testing.
Oh, we do.
Stewart?
I didn't see that. Okay. Give him a call.
I'm going to put you on speakerphone. Okay. Are you there? Stewart? Yeah, I want to, are you still interested in addressing the school board? No, it isn't. We just arrived at the surveillance testing for all Chico Unified staff. Do you still want to address the board? Okay, I'm going to put you on speakerphone. I'll let you know when you can start, and you'll have three minutes. Okay? Okay, go ahead, Stewart.
Yeah, thanks for calling back. I thought the meeting was already adjourned. Okay, so yeah, I was just going to talk briefly about just my thoughts on returning to school either full-time, AM, PM, or going back to Zoom. So I guess my thought on this is that all jobs pose an inherent risk when it comes to working in person, you know, hospital workers, utility employees, food and ad companies, and you know, so many others that have returned to work to ensure that supply chains are not interrupted or disrupted, to ensure society can continue to function and operate. So I recognize the concern in returning to work. I do, I think we all, you know, pretty concerned about that. But ultimately, I think that, you know, a lot of us have had to kind of accept that risk and go back to work, you know, to places of business, or to Walmarts, or Targets, or restaurants, or whatever. And so I would just like to see that same thing happen in schools. You know, I'm happy that we got back to AM, PM. I know I have two kids that go to Rosedale, and they've been loving being back in class. The teachers there are wonderful, and I heard others talk tonight just about the amount of progress that's been made just in the last few weeks that they've been back versus what they were doing when they were on Zoom. So I'm excited about that, but I do hope that we can at least maintain that, which I understand did pass, that we're going to stay in class until December 18th, and I just hope that we can maybe extend that to full-time, you know, in January when we come back or whenever. But I just, one thing I wanted to point out is that I talked to several teachers just, you know, in passing, you know, just throughout Chico, from varying political perspectives. And, you know, some of these teachers are, a large percentage of them, want to go back to work, and their reason is basically saying, hey, these kids need us, the risks that we are exposed to are minimal, especially when it comes to students. A lot of these teachers go to grocery stores, they go to gyms, they go to Walmarts, and Cosco's, and Targets, and parks, and really, they're at greater risk of attending those activities than they are in their own classroom, and kids, too. I think that kids go to grocery stores and gas stations and all that as well. So I think that it's just interesting to see how somehow the classroom full-time participation is more dangerous than all the other public activities that we engage in every day. And so I think, you know, for those reasons, I would just love to see, kind of move on past it, and recognize that we do have to exercise serious precautions. The virus is real. I think that we all understand that, and that there is definitely inherent danger that comes with meeting in small or in large groups, or classrooms, or going to eat. But I just find it, you know, ironic and almost hypocritical that, again, I was at the gym the other day, I was talking to a teacher who told me they did not want to go back to school, they were fearful of their life, yet they are working out at the gymnasium. It just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, and so I would just hope that we could move on past that. I think that politics obviously shouldn't be a determining factor, and something as important as school, as mental health for our kids and as education. So I would just love to see teachers move more toward logic and pragmatism and less toward a political agenda. I think that I heard a lady mention tonight that the COVID is like Russian roulette. I don't know if that's a really accurate analogy. Roulette usually involves a revolver that has six rounds, and there's only one bullet out of six versus the coronavirus, which is seven.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. The time has elapsed. Thank you very much. The time has elapsed, thank you very much.
So let me jump in here and clarify a little bit. I think what's happening is, um, when they're having to do the speaker card, they have to identify which item that they're going to address. And I think sometimes there might be some confusion in the numbering of those items. So maybe what we can do on ones that, um, you know, it's real clear when there's ones that there's a lot of comments on, like the AM PM tonight. But maybe on some of these ones that are, you know, only one person, we can do a double check and make sure that's what they want to speak to.
Okay. All righty, um, I'm assuming there's no more calls? Okay, we concluded that. So we're going to recess and do the, yes, I'm sorry, John.
Before we do, uh, we spoke earlier about the process for agendizing uh, future items. Would now be an appropriate time to bring one of those forward?
Yeah, we actually, this was years ago, you know, and actually, I was the one who did it. Um, I was in the same position as you are now, where there was an issue that I wanted to get on the agenda, and I was trying to figure out, how do we do that? And it was this really confusing thing, because wasn't it where, in order to bring it forward, to agendize it, you were actually, people actually then started discussing it?
Yeah.
And you couldn't do that, because that was against the rules? So I think uh, it has to be something where, now, I know you've mentioned before about wanting, you mentioned this earlier, about wanting to discuss more about the homeless and your concerns about attendance with, with the homeless. And if that would be something, um, I guess, you'd want to just, how do you, you want to?
Sure, I, I think just to clarify, if uh, Tom wants to, you know, ask the board their interest in agendizing an item on the homeless, if, you know, the board has agreement with that. In the past, it's just been a very brief, I want to agendize this, then work with staff to make sure we get you the right information. Um, and it's been a simple, you know, second agreement, and, and we will go do that.
I guess it would have to be what, which your objective would be, so that clear direction can be given, and so that clearly the board would know what it is that you wanted to spend time focusing on, and, you know, that type of thing. But we couldn't have a discussion about it, because that would, wouldn't be on the agenda.
We, we would be discussing the motion, not the, not the topic of the conversation, yes. Given that, I would like to move that we agendize a discussion at our next meeting regarding uh, homeless services for unsheltered students that would potentially increase attendance, um, given their uh, potentially increased uh, issues around attendance in the COVID environment. I'm not sure what that would look like. I'm looking for, to staff for some recommendations, perhaps about what we could do.
Okay, okay. So, Eileen, yes?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to second that with a friendly amendment to emphasize in the report, the um, interplay that our new position has in, in helping with those issues. If Ted, oh, is Ted gone? Yeah, that um, I was so impressed with what we're doing with that position, that I think if we're going to discuss the issue, that would be a good way to fold in the role of that position.
With that person, okay. Okay, so that was the motion?
Well, I'm a little confused. Are, are we literally making a motion? Or are we just giving direction to staffs?
Well, we have to take a vote on this, because it, because this whole, this whole idea of agendizing got very murky.
Yeah, I know.
And it, and it, and so the cleanest way to do it is just like Tom's doing it right now, is where if somebody, because otherwise, people don't get things put before that they want to have addressed. And it's, it's just gotten kind of out of, you know, it's been too murky. So it, the cleanest thing is to have a well-formulated uh, subject and topic, and then present it and say, this is, you know, this is how I want to do it, and then have somebody, and then if three people agree at least, then at least the, you know, admin knows, yes, we're going to put that on the agenda. We know that there's certain things that have to be on certain agendas on certain months, and every, you know, things have to be taken care of. So it may not, you know, we can't dictate exactly when it's going to be, but
That was my
you know, the, the timeliness, of course, for this, because of the COVID and our concern about the low attendance of these kids, obviously, is going to be important. So what we'll do
Yeah, I think we have clear direction, that's good.
Okay, so we'll take a vote now. And Linda, do you understand what's, what we're doing?
I do, but I'm kind of with Kathy, wondering, is it, are we okay in making a motion and doing an action on an item that's not on our agenda?
Well, see, but that's the
That's giving clear direction to staff.
But that's a catch-22, because you can't bring up putting something on the agenda without bringing it up.
I know, I know.
So basically
I remember this discussion before, so
Remember, we've had this before a couple times. But
I'm fine.
Tom can bring it up, I think, as an item from the floor, because he's still, I mean, that, you know, I think
Right, but we would normally not take action from an item from the floor. That's what I'm saying.
So potentially moving, moving forward, would we need to add a, like a, a section to the agenda of where we just plan future agendas?
We have done that before as well. And certainly during the planning meeting, um, the December reorganization meeting, we could do that.
Yep.
I think right now, there's enough consensus without having to quote-unquote "take a vote", that this is
I agree, Kathy.
an item of great interest, given our report that we had on attendance and the discrepancy in, right? And the discrepancy in the different groups.
So really, the board's not um, taking action on anything that is going to impact the future. What you're deciding is something that you want us to bring forward, which at that point, you will make a decision on and take action. So I, I'm clear, as long as the board is okay. I, I'm clear that there is direction from uh, the majority of the board on adding an agenda item, and we can do that.
Well, if it gets on the agenda, I will throw my motion, and then we don't have to worry about any of this anymore.
Well, but the thing is, okay, and just, you know, I mean, I've been doing this for 12 years. This, this has been a problem, because people cannot, like yourself, sometimes get something on the agenda that you really want. And so having a process that is clear is very important. And we do, because we tell everybody, and this is a fact, is that not one individual of us can act independently. We do have to have a consensus before we move forward with something like that, because we're taking time from staff, and we're asking them to do something, and we have to agree that that's what we're going to do. You know, if any one of us just willy-nilly said, oh, you know, hey, Kelly, I want you to do this, or Kathy says, I want you to do this, we can't have that. So we have to have a consensus in order to make that happen. So that's why I think we should take a vote. And, you know, I'm not going to be here to make this happen at the next meeting, but, you know, putting something on a place, a placeholder on the uh, agenda in the future so that people can bring something forward.
Okay. Call through the vote then.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. It looked like Eileen had something else to say potentially, though.
I, I'm, I, you know, I'm with Liz. Those of us that have long gray hair from being around a while, remember how difficult this issue has been. And, and I was one of the board members one time that had an issue that I thought was extremely important. And I brought it up. And I was the only board member that thought it was extremely important. Um, and uh, i- i- it, it's just like Liz mentioned. It takes up so much staff time that unless the entire board feels it's an issue, or a majority of the board feels it's an important issue for us to take up administrative time to investigate and bring it back to the board, we don't, we, we um, you know, we just go home.
But the key is, is not discussing it.
Yeah, I'm not a stranger to following a procedure, I promise.
Is that somebody has to have a clear formulation in their mind of what they wanted to, because you can't have a lot of discussion. That, that is against the, the rules. Okay, so we're going to take a recess, and we're going to do the
Did we, did we move on the previous item?
Yeah, we just did.
Oh, we did, okay. We did, I said aye in the end, I remember that now.
Yeah.
It was 30 seconds ago.
Yeah, yeah. So we're going to go ahead and open up this, uh, what is this? It's a meeting of the Board of Directors of the Financing Corporation for Chico Unified.
Yeah, we do this every November. You are not only the members, the board members, trustees for the Chico Unified School District, but you are also board members of a corporation, a financing corporation that exists in case we need to issue debt as a school district, because as a government agency, we cannot issue debt. So we do that through our financing corporation. Um, I will report to this board that based on your action a year ago, we retired the remaining debt that was left, um, which actually saves us about $38,000, over 11% of the interest, related to a certificate of participation, a COPS that was used to finance uh, solar panels at Little Chico Creek School. So with that, there is no debt. The only item left is the approval of minutes. Uh, it is important, though, I would say, to keep this corporation alive, because at the time, we do need it. Um, it would be good to have it active every year. So we'll continue to bring this to you.